What, Witz is really good.
Outstanding.
We're gonna celebrate with Witz tonight.
I may have to do that and just take a whole bunch of probiotics and hope it works out. Yeah, yeah, really.
We got everybody?
It would be worth being uncomfortable.
Wait, try to get back from the restroom and then we'll go. Got an EpiPen or something?
In the car? Actually, he did by the time you get there. No. No, 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 I'm fine, really, no, I carry stuff with me all the time. And I don't really need an EpiPen, thank God, so. Mine just hits my stomach. So you say you know everybody up in here?
Wait for Adam to get back from the restroom and then we'll go. Do we know if we have any public comment?
I don't know. How will we know?
They would fill out a card in the back.
And so who's gonna tell you that?
Normally, they bring it up, but we'll just ask, we'll play it by ear.
That might be the law of the law of the meeting.
Oh, it would be, absolutely. Well, good evening. We will go ahead and get started on time. We appreciate everyone being here and we appreciate the work of so many people to get us to this night. If you haven't thought about this, this process that we are going to go through tonight to select the next president of UNF, or the president-elect, has not been done in 15 years. And if we've done our job right, trustees and search committee, none of us will be around for the next one time either, except Willie, who finds his way every time there's a search. But we are very glad to have you here tonight and appreciate your interest, not only tonight and over the past two weeks when we've interviewed the semifinalists and the finalists, but really even going back to the beginning of this process, which was in April and May. I want to recognize a few people, trustees, before we get going with our work. First and foremost, I want to recognize our former chair, Joy Corman, who is here, who really set this wheel in motion. Joy worked for many years as chair with John, and then when he ultimately decided to announce his retirement, hers was the fir-- she was the first person to receive that call, which then set into process, her having to work with the BOG regulations to compose the search committee, which she did very ably. And I'd like to recognize those who are here tonight, and there's many of them. Andres Calo, I saw him. Andres is there. Bella, saw you. Oh, yeah, look, they're all sitting together. And Debbie Johnson. Ann Lefrato. Matt Holley could not be with us tonight. Governor Wendy Link from the Board of Governors, recognized Ann. Paul, served on the search committee, as did Sharon, as did Rada. Judy Rodriguez. Karen Patterson, I think I saw Karen in the back there. Bruce Taylor could not be here, and then I had the chance to chair the committee. Joy, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to chair the committee. It's been an exciting and a very interesting process. Just to remind the public, those of you who have not been at each of our meetings, the process that we are going to go through tonight is to select a president-elect for the university, a final qualified candidate for the president-elect, who will then be recommended by us to the Board of Governors for confirmation. We anticipate that happening on March 29th, and just by coincidence, that meeting of the Board of Governors will be here at UNF. And we would encourage all of you who can attend, we'll get word out as to the time. But that will be a momentous day when the Board of Governors confirms our selection tonight, and then we have truly the wheel set into motion of the next president for UNF. So certainly want to thank everybody for that. There are a number of people here who really are going to make the next president possible and successful, and that is members of our foundation. Saw Vince McCormick, our chair is here, as are many other members. If you're on the foundation, would you raise your hand, please? And Ann McCollin has-- What most people don't recognize is that our foundation, when we say they support the president, they really support the president because a portion of the president's contract is paid through the foundation, but for their good work, it could not be done. And Ann, thank you so much for the work that you do in organizing that activity. And I want to recognize this group over here. Just everybody from Karen and Melanie and Sharon and everybody, thank you so-- for so much with all the great work that has been done. I have commented on many times, not only how smoothly this is run, but how really-- the snackage has been really good. We've enjoyed that and it's kept us going through these meetings. So thank you so much for that. So we-- this is a publicly noticed meeting. We appreciate all of you coming out, as well as our members of the press. We want to open our meeting tonight, calling to order, we do have a quorum, so we're able to proceed. We will also have the opportunity to have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make public comment at this time? Of course, Dr. Corrigan, who we have deemed to be the public. Matt, go ahead, thank you.
Let me just be a little more formal than that. My name is Matt Corrigan. I'm the chair of the Department of Political Science and Public Administration. It's my 22nd year here at UNF, really hard to believe. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank all the members of the Board of Trustees. You all have worked very hard on this. I have to admit, I'm a little frustrated tonight because I'm supposed to be a political observer and supposed to be some type of expert, and I have no idea what you're about to do. And I've come to many of these meetings, and I really don't know what you're gonna do. But I've watched the candidates interact with many different constituencies on campus. I've watched the candidates be questioned by you, and it's clear that change is coming to our university. And it's important for you, I think, to manage that change in an ethical, inclusive way. And I also think it's important for the incoming president, whoever that may be, to reach out to those units and colleges that may be new to them, because we're gonna have new responsibilities. And it's important for those of us in those units and colleges to reach back and to make what's gonna happen really constructive to me.
You're saying something very important, and we want to make sure we hear it. So let's ensure that--
I don't have to do all of it again, do I? Yeah. And finally, I'd just like to thank my colleague, my faculty representative, Rada, and I want to thank all the other faculty who've been involved in this process and staff. What you're doing tonight's really important because the president is critical to the growth of this university. So thank you and good luck. Thanks, Matt. Does anyone else from the public wish to make comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into the formal portion of our meeting. What-- just to give you a preview of what we're going to do, we're going to briefly go over some of the feedback that we have received from various constituency groups, survey results that we can go over briefly. All the members of the Board, of course, can comment about comments that they may have received from others. And then we want to go into actually the board deliberations. And on that piece, I have asked four members of the Board of Trustees, one each, to present one of the four finalists. It is not advocacy of that particular individual. We had an outstanding pool of finalists. And for those of you who have not been able to be at the full, all the committee meetings or see their interviews, I wanted you to hear about the candidates that we're considering tonight. We were very, very blessed to have what started out as a field of over 75 people who applied. Search Committee narrowed that list to 12. We then had in-person interviews with 11 and a video interview with the 12. Bring that down to four individuals, and those four individuals went through an absolute gauntlet when they were on campus over last week in terms of the number of constituency groups they met with and the amount of time that they spent. And we certainly want to appreciate that. Just for your information, as part of the search process, all of the finalists underwent a preliminary criminal financial education and professional background check. I reviewed those, members of the boards, you've reviewed much of that information as well. There's certainly nothing disqualifying in any of the backgrounds of the finalists that we're considering, so we can move ahead comfortable with that. You have probably seen that we received the feedback on the four, final four presidential candidates. This is all available online if you wish to see it. I know many of you in the room filled out parts of this, and I really appreciate the candor with which you filled that out. It was-- I read it over the weekend, I'm sure my colleagues did as well, some really outstanding thoughts. And as Dr. Corrigan had just indicated, all of this was done for the purpose of thinking about how we're gonna be best led as this university goes forward. So I really appreciate the work that was done. And before we get into the discussion of the candidates, I think there's one person in the room, who's not in the room tonight, who needs to be thanked, and that's John Delaney. 15 years is a long run. He has given his heart and soul to this institution, and we need to recognize that. Ann Hicks just joined us. She was also on the search committee. Ann, thank you so much for your feedback. All right, so first of all, do we have from the Board itself any questions or comments resulting from the feedback material that you have seen? Anything that you'd like to raise at this point? Well, if not, let's go ahead and start with the presentation of the four candidates. And I'm going to ask trustee Piatti to begin with the discussion of Dr. Kevin Carman.
Thank you very much. So this is just a brief summary to refresh all of our memories again. Dr. Kevin Carman is provost and executive vice president at the University of Nevada at Reno and former professor and dean of the College of Science at Louisiana State University. He earned his PhD in biological oceanography from Florida State University. He began his faculty career at LSU, rising through the ranks from assistant to associate to full professor, and he served as dean of the College of Science from 2005 to 2012. In 2013, he was appointed provost at UNR. As provost, he has led a comprehensive revision of the undergraduate core curriculum, developed a plan to move UNR toward R1 status, and led updates of UNR's master plan and strategic plan. At LSU, he established a college development program and secured over $40 million during the Forever LSU campaign. Themes of his visit here included increasing research profile in the way UNF wishes to do so and having experience in execution and trade-offs in building research capacity at a university. These are not gonna be grammatically correct or parallel, Kevin, they're just--
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I'm not gonna correct you, Rada.
Okay, good, just wanted you to know that--
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. He brought an internationally known group of scientists to LSU as a cluster hire. Another theme of the visit is the Nevada FIT Program, a series of summer boot camps across disciplines for incoming students preceded by the BIOS boot camps established at LSU. Another theme was improving best practices in teaching by implementing an ACUE faculty training program. Track record on increasing student diversity, including such programs as Gear Up, Trio, McNair Scholars, and the Dean's Future Scholars Program. And he made note of the fact that universities can't just put out the money and hope that students attend, working with families is an important aspect of this. He supports campus athletics as a source of campus identity and pride and an opportunity for students who might not go to college. He has worked with legislators. He has been held accountable using metrics such as graduation rates. He characterized himself as a strong leader and a better listener, and he has experience managing budgets and cuts. So I'm gonna give a very brief summary of the feedback, because I think that was part of the summary. Many, many liked Carman. Many found him the best candidate because he is a provost and is eminently qualified to select the next provost. People found him thoughtful, experienced, humorous, humble, honest, didn't-- he didn't claim to know what he didn't know, unflappable, he knows the role of a regional public institution and recognizes its value vis-à-vis the local community. He is very well-versed on-- he was found to be very well-versed on UNF and prepared to take us to next steps as defined by the UNF community. Some concerns were also described in the feedback summary, which included limited experience in working with unions, a reliance on consensus decision-making that sometimes was too much, his fundraising ability was unclear to some, he was found to be not-- perhaps not the strongest candidate in knowing state politics and knowing our funding model, and so that's kind of a summary of Kevin Carman.
Thank you. Any further discussion among the Board about Kevin Carman? Not for debate at this point, but just any points anyone wants to add?
Will we have an opportunity to discuss?
Yes. Yeah, I think we're just gonna tee up the four candidates at this point, and then we'll move into deliberations as we move towards selection. Tom, if you can discuss Dr. Flores with us, please?
Definitely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The candidate--
The candidate that I spent the most time with was Dr. John Floris from K-State. While he was on our campus, we spent, well, I went through the search committee process. We had a lunch and a dinner and as well as our 75-minute Board of Trustees interview. In my time with him, I came away thinking he is a very calm and thoughtful leader who has a genuine and relaxed style. He is passionate about the things, all things agriculture, and we had much to discuss in this important field of study. Early on, we set a very specific criteria for our next leader. We are seeking an inspirational leader who is articulate, accessible, and approachable with a passion for higher education. Dr. Floris certainly has all three. In my opinion, he is one of the most reserved of our finalists, and that may be interpreted in some cases as a bit dismissive, distant and strong-willed. After spending as much time with him as I did, I think part of that may be attributable to his reserved personality. He made a point of saying he's the most extroverted introvert among the finalists. Dr. Floris was much more relaxed at dinner. He was timid, he was not timid about taking hard questions, and all of us were impressed. One of my dinner companions commented on his CV running almost 30 pages. He is definitely credentialed, as are all of our finalists. We expressed the need to hire a caring, supporting, and compassionate listener. Dr. Floris often mentioned the importance of his family, his coworkers, and his staff. He mentioned the wonderful people he comes in contact with through his visits on K-State's regional offices. He has a folksy demeanor that sets people at ease, and I like very much his way of connecting with everyone in the room in a very personal way. One bit of criticism, I don't remember as many specific details from his answers to some of our questions as I do the other finalists. His way of answering questions by relying on personal stories while endearing often had me a little lost on whether he answered the specific question or not. We set out to find a leader who was strategic, creative, and innovative. While I think he has strong talents in these areas, I did have a concern that his university was unable to create a better solution for a state budget shortfall than passing on a new fee directly to its students. Bellegenta, who by the way is a terrific representative on our search committee, asked for clarification, and I didn't think his answer was one I completely understood or agreed with. UNF wants to become an economic development driver, a university that promotes research in areas of excellence, integrated with our students and our community. In his view with our search committee, I was impressed he had formed a relationship with Pepsi and talked about the importance of public and private partnerships now and going forward. Fundraising is another important component for our next president. I appreciate that Dr. Floris has been a team member for fundraising efforts between five and 20 million. While some of the other candidates have much stronger backgrounds and were directly responsible for major gifts and fundraising, he still ranks high on this list. We are seeking an eloquent advocate for the value, higher value, the value of higher education for the public good. It is evident Dr. Floris is passionate about higher education. We talked about rising student debt levels and the impact it has on our students and the need to address this national issue. Our performance metrics and the way we are measured on progress has and will continue to be very important to UNF. Dr. Floris talked about being a data-driven leader and recognized the importance of success in this area. He talked about forging relationships with legislators. Just one side note, as far as I, as far as the qualifications, all of our finalists are amazing, amazingly well-credentialed and have proven track records of experience, inclusion, service, and leadership. Our task obviously is to choose the right fit. And finally, I think it's important to note that many of our, some of our, several of our candidates said they were not looking for a job but were intrigued by the possibility of UNF. Once they've visited and experienced who we are as a university and as a collective body and what our future holds, they all want the job. I agree. Our future is bright and our foundation is strong.
Thank you, Tom. Next for a presentation about Dr. Rhonda Phillips, Trustee Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of notes before I talk about Dr. Phillips. First, you recognize some of the great folks that have been hugely helpful to us throughout the process. I also want to recognize the Parker Search Firm. We began this process as a group of laypeople trying to work our way through a process to hire the next president. I think Parker brought incredible depth and intellect and skill in scouring the nation and identifying the very best candidates for us. And I talked to a number of faculty members over the weekend in preparation for tonight, and one of the things I observed to the faculty was this, I had to assume that many on campus would have assumed that the search would have ended with a, at least one, if not more, non-traditional candidates in the field. And so, we would have had a debate tonight about traditional versus non-traditional candidate. In fact, we have four incredibly talented academics with four very different backgrounds, steeped in different disciplines. But I love the fact that as a campus community, from the trustees, to faculty, to students, to alumni, to those who are friends of the university, we get to have a discussion about which of four outstanding academics will lead this great institution. I think that's a, I think that's not only a tremendous credit to the search firm, but to the search committee who led us and then how we get to tonight. So, just a quick observation. With respect to Dr. Phillips, I had some tremendous interaction with Dr. Phillips at breakfast on my own on Wednesday morning prior to the beginning of her formal interview process on campus. What I found in Dr. Phillips was the smaller the audience, the more crisp her reflection of her experience and where she wanted to take the university. So, my experience at breakfast was really a great insight into her, her background, and where she would want to take UNF. Dr. Phillips, as everybody knows, is the dean of the Honors College at Purdue University. It is a large interdisciplinary college which allows the most exceptional students at Purdue, which is an exceptional university in and of itself, to engage in an interdisciplinary academic experience to produce the best of the best, as she described it. I found that Dr. Phillips had a great focus on student success and really cares about the learning environment in which her students would prosper. Prior to her service at Purdue, she was the Associate Dean of the Honors College at Arizona State University, and then spent nine years on the faculty of the University of Florida, both as a professor of urban and regional planning and then also running a local government planning center for the university. She is clearly expert in site selection and assisting communities in growing their tax base and helping communities assess their best assets to recruit new job creators. And her time postgraduate in the private sector doing that work in combination with her consulting work that still continues today, I thought, would be a great asset to Jacksonville as UNF continues to attempt to be a catalyst in job creation in this community. There is no doubt, and faculty affirmed this as I talked to them over the last three days, that Dr. Phillips is incredibly bright. She is a three-time Fulbright winner. I hope I've explained that or said that correctly. I'm sure that means something to somebody, but I'm told...
It means something to you.
Yeah. It means something to me, says Dr. Egan. But I am told that's really impressive, and it is impressive by virtue of the deep intellect that she had and she shared. She's the author of, or co-author of 24 academic books in her field, and she received her PhD from Georgia Tech, which at the time was the nation's premier educational institution when it came to city and regional planning. So, she is deeply steeped academically and experientially in the field. I asked her about metrics. It's my favorite topic, as some know. And the two things that she said about metrics that I thought were really terrific. One was, and I love this quote, she said, "If we are going to rely on state money, we have to speak in the language policymakers are using." That is a savvy that struck me as impressive by Dr. Phillips. She also said, "Performance metrics must result from the, improvement in performance metrics must result from the resource allocation that you invest in it, and those resource allocations must come from a strategic plan that has strategic thinking in it." She emphasized, as you remember over and over again, the strategic plan gathers dust, but it's the strategic thinking behind it that allows that plan to be put into place. Like all of you, I read the faculty feedback and the staff feedback and the alumni feedback and the student feedback that was provided on all four candidates. It was interesting to note to me, 34 faculty members commented on Dr. Phillips. That's about the same number that commented on the other three, which if I do my math correctly, it's about 6% of our total faculty. And that's not to minimize the faculty feedback relative to the whole, but it does indicate that we got a lot of interest from a small number, and I am thankful that they were there. Both reading their feedback and attending faculty forums, the level of commitment dedication to this process rather from you and your colleagues was really impressive. Here's what faculty members said from a positive perspective about Dr. Phillips. They found her to be thoughtful. They found her to be intelligent and a great, she had a great way to frame her academic vision. I would say from a negative perspective or not as positive perspective, I think folks found her lack-of-word economy to be a challenge and that, and that perhaps a little more seasoning in her current role or other leadership roles might serve her well before she take on the task of becoming the president of this university or another. You will remember, however, her deep ties to North Florida, both having served at the faculty of UF and having a home just north of here, and she described in the faculty forum, UNF as being her dream job. But ultimately, I look at what the deans said about the four candidates as a great reflection of how to characterize at the most macro level each of the four. Here's what the deans said about Dr. Phillips. "Dr. Phillips is clearly a very bright and articulate individual. She has a promising future in administration, but we felt that the level and depth of her experience is not commensurate with that of the other candidates." And I think the deans do a nice job of capturing Dr. Phillips and my experience with her. We'll leave it to the Board to see if that's their experience, but I will say this, I gained a friend in this process in Dr. Phillips, and regardless of whether she selected as our president, next president or not, she's someone that I have no doubt we can call upon to serve the interests of this community or this institution regardless of the decision that we make.
Thank you. Dr. Egan, speak about Dr. Samansky.
Get that a little closer.
A little closer. Okay. So, Dr. Samansky's background, originally from Buffalo, New York. He was lured to the South to play basketball and tennis at UNC Asheville, where he majored in economics. He went on to receive a Master's in Economics at Vanderbilt University and an MBA and PhD in Marketing Economics and Analytics at the University of Wisconsin. His professional life has been, to use his words, "one of change and advancement." He started with a post as Controller of the Treasury for the State of Tennessee, then began an almost 20-year career at Texas A&amp;M with his teaching and administrative duties focused on marketing and retail studies. In 2010, he became dean of the University of Cincinnati College of Business and has stayed in that post until this time. As dean, he realized many successes. The college at the time he began was stagnant, unranked, and suffering from financially, from financial and other stress. But in the last eight years, under his stewardship, the business college has experienced a dramatic increase in rankings and a turnaround in profitability by his creation of a, quote, "multifaceted vision for strategic innovation and the execution of that vision with both internal and external partners." He's also served on the boards of nonprofit technology-based innovation hubs as well as public companies. When I was reviewing the material that we were charged to review, I went back to President Delaney's outlined six qualities that were important for the next president, and I'm using his past performance to anticipate his future for this candidate, so I've drawn on the references, his references to flesh out some of these attributes. So, the first was demonstrated capacity to lead. Dr. Samansky's references consider him a transformational leader, thoughtful, engaged, and articulate. Widely recognized by the Board of the University of Cincinnati, his peers and provost is dynamic and effective, willing to make strategic decisions that others can't make. He listens to and involves others in decision-making in the spirit of shared governance and cultivates and encourages excellence in others. He is skilled at developing relationships across multiple constituencies, students, faculty, business people, community leaders, as well as trustees. The second attribute that we were charged to find was the ability to manage, understanding how to manage and motivate people. His references say that Dr. Samansky can speak and engage with large groups and is also very effective one-on-one. One of his biggest strengths is external relationships, careful in the selections he's made for leadership teams. He's let his team members do their job in the scope of the vision he provided and not a micromanager. One of the reasons he succeeds was his willingness to listen and help create a vision, and although he has ruffled a few feathers when he has had to make tough decisions, all respect his integrity. Third, the ability to fundraise. He's described as a very effective fundraiser and has raised between 45 and 70 million, depending on the reference. And he's willing to make joint proposals with donors who have varied interests across the institution and understands how to be a team player in these dynamics. His ability to understand budgets. He understands the big picture from a fiscal perspective, understands university finance, understands numbers in all perspectives, and is decisive and understands how to make businesses successful. His experience at University of Cincinnati also bears this out. The University of Cincinnati Colleges have been challenged by declining state subsidies and responsibility-centered management. Through effective financial modeling that focused on both revenue growth and cost discipline, the Linder School, the business college, is the most profitable college at the University of Cincinnati, generating 81% of the net operating profit of the academic side of the enterprise. The fifth attribute was the ability to understand academics and the culture of the academy. Dr. Samansky's career has been in academia except for a short tenure in Tennessee. He's won awards for teaching and research, and most recently in 2015 was named the Professor of the Year by the Order of the Omega at the University of Cincinnati. He has served on university search committees and operation committees. From his references, he has hired very dynamic faculty and is a strong partner in diversity at the university level. He consults with faculty but understands that they don't make the decisions for him. Students are fond of him, and the best dean, says one reference, he has ever known, though it won't be a big jump for him to transition to the role of president. The sixth attribute, which is the ability to understand the political structure in Florida, there are no references speaking specifically to that skill set. So, then I moved on to sort of what, that's what others have thought of him. What do we think of him? So, through our questioning at the Board of Trustees level, the question, of course, was why UNF? Why him? Why now? He sees himself as passionate, as completely all-in and a visionary, and UNF is an easy place to get passionate about. He sees that UNF is at the cusp of a breakthrough in the international, I mean, in the educational community and believes that he can help make it happen. He sees the UNF presidency as 100% external and 100% internal. He apologized for some of the redundancy of his answers, but he believes that he's consistent and not just repetitive. In terms of performance metrics, his quote, "That which gets rewarded gets repeated." He likes performance metrics because they measure that you're doing, working hard at the right things. Things like attracting and retaining students, making sure that graduates have jobs, Pell Grants, et cetera. He feels very comfortable making strategies to ensure that we meet these targets and is proud that they exist. Hiring. Good hiring involves finding out what value system hires bring to the table. Good hires innovate. Ask what else can we be doing? Are team players and fit into the culture? Tennis taught him how to be strategic, of course, thinking about the third shot after the current one. Basketball taught him teamwork. The bad hire he made was only because life seemed to get in the way. He found another position in the university that suited her better. Leadership. For Dr. Samansky, it's ultimately about integrity and doing the right thing. He sees himself as a servant leader, working for everyone else. Official titles don't make you entitled. Leadership requires timing and thoughtful implementation. You definitely can't be an autocrat in academia. So, then again, I'm now going to the survey and the input from others. So, in our others designation, there were three, and 100% of those who responded saw significant strengths and have no concerns about his candidacy. Of the nine community members that responded, almost all rank him at the top of their choices. Their only concerns are his understanding of the Florida legislative process and whether he's too busy with corporate boards, whether they would constitute a conflict of interest, and that perhaps he used too many ums when he spoke. Of the seven alumni that responded, 100% were positive and had no concerns about his candidacy. Of the 39 staff that responded, almost entirely were positive comments. The concerns they listed were that he may be too much of a businessperson and not enough of an academic, that he may be a little slick at times, and after all, he is a marketer. One said, "Don't hire him," but everyone else supported his candidacy strongly. Of the 27 faculty, almost all identified strengths that would benefit UNF, specifically vision, leadership, fundraising, and innovation. A few of the faculty responders were concerned that he didn't place enough value on a liberal arts education. One responder was worried that the College of Arts and Sciences faculty would have to be won over and that he was condescending when others didn't share his opinion, but that his proposals were generally sound. One responder feared an uproar from the faculty while most considered him a visionary, personable, open, and far and above the best candidate. And then to the three students that responded, and of course, you're my favorite, they were 100% positive, and to quote one responder, "Very impressive experience in successfully navigating difficult financial situations, and Dr. Samansky knows how to fundraise. He has a proven track record of being a team player. In addition, he understands the importance of balancing both research and maintaining high-level classroom education. He has a clear vision of moving UNF forward. He understands the importance of study abroad and diversity and inclusion, and these are the cornerstones of UNF." And last, again, to the letter from the deans and associate... He understands the importance of study abroad and diversity and inclusion, and these are the cornerstones of UNF." And last, again, to the letter from the deans and associate provosts, they say that we were all impressed with Dr. Samansky. He has enthusiasm, passion, and vision that would be a great asset to UNF. He has excellent experience both in the academy and the private sector, and his external focus and interpersonal skills make him the leading contender by our count.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the four trustees for presenting those candidates. We'll open it up for just a period of discussion now, or any questions related to any of the candidates as presented? And before we do that, I'll just note that the dean's letter has been referred to twice. That was a letter sent by the deans to me on February 16th, 2018, and at least two of the attributes of two of the candidates were quoted from, but if anyone would like to see that letter, it is available. Among the board, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to share one of the conversations I had with one of the candidates, and I'm so happy you recognized President Delaney, because everything at this point is a building block. And so we were discussing what we thought was going to be one of the deficits of the candidates coming in. And so we started talking about the state legislature and the amount of money that comes in. And I had talked about President Delaney, the part, I know, being a prosecutor, a chief of staff to a mayor, a mayor himself, a mayor that convinced us to pass a $2 billion Better Jacksonville plan. A president of a college that was able to build millions and millions of dollars' worth of buildings and assets. And in many of those times, they were not always the best of times, yet he was still able to go to Tallahassee and convince the legislature that this was great for the state of Florida, it was great for Jacksonville. And so when I thought about it, I'm like, the person that can tell the story, the person that can show the vision, the person that can inspire, that's who we need. Because over time, if you can do all those things, you can make those connections, and when you can make people believe in you over a period of time, getting the money from Tallahassee and other people is not going to be a problem. And so I started thinking about that, and I'm like, who's that guy? Who's the guy that's going to help tell the UNF story? Sell the vision, get it done, and at the end of the day, inspire us all. And so I kept looking over Dr. Samansky's resume. When I met him, I felt inspired, I felt like he had a vision. I felt like he was the most passionate and visionary. He said, "Passion and leading with your heart, all-in, external experiences raising money, 45 million to 70 million" has been mentioned. He talked about metrics, talked about being a servant leader, shared respect, humility. One of the things he said, he goes, "You have titles, we have titles, but we are not entitled." That really stuck with me. He talked about stepping up, and he felt like, and the faculty and the people in the room, he could feel the energy and was saying, "We're ready to do something." You know, what that something is, is what he'll spend and take that and turn it into a vision and bringing UNF up to the next level, whether it's in terms of research or adding programs and schools and all those things. And another thing that he talked about that impressed me, he talked about his business fellows program, where they had mentors and coaching and had 100% graduation rate. That was impressive. He talked about talking to parents. You know, in Cincinnati, when he went there, they were, basically the business school was failing, okay? He was talking about they were having 10% to 12% budget cuts year after year, and he came in and not only turned it around, but he talked about how did he turn it around? He talked about going to the parents and telling what the benefits that their children were going to have and what the possibilities would be when they graduated and succeeded. And so he began to turn it around, because if you're a parent, you're not going to want to send your student, your child, your precious child, to an institution that might be failing. And so that impressed me, when he talked about talking to parents and convincing them that yes, this would be a good decision. If he's able to do that in Cincinnati and at UNF, we are ascending, okay? We didn't have those problems that they had at the University of Cincinnati. If he's able to convince those parents and the students to go to an institution like that, I said to myself, wow, what could he do for UNF? I was really impressed by that. Something else that he said was extremely unique, and he talked about the seamless classroom and where does education begin and where it ends. And he said, "Education does not begin in the classroom, nor does it end in the classroom." And I started thinking about, you know, I may be wrong on my statistic, the thousand or more acres of marshland that we were given. It wasn't learning opportunity. And it really struck me because that's learning outside the classroom and being able to show the students the unique experiences that no other college really can offer, especially as our marine biologies and sciences are coming in on their own and are gaining national recognition. He will be able to offer that seamless opportunity for our students. I was also impressed because Mr. Hollingsworth brought the fact that we, and Mr. Tansler brought the fact that we're kind of, we're trying to look for diverse candidates, like traditional and maybe more of a business background. Well, to me, it seems like he bridges that, okay? He's in the school of business, he's a marketing person, he serves on private boards, Fortune 500 and Fortune 200 companies. And so to me, it seems to me we have the best of both worlds, because he understands academia, he was teaching classes, he's been a dean, he's turned a business school around, he's raised millions and millions of dollars. And one of the things this board always talks about, and especially when it comes to the matrix, is how do we make our degrees matter? How do you go out and get a degree and get a job? And when he's working with these Fortune 500 and Fortune 200 companies, I believe he will be able to take his unique experience of serving with the private sector on these boards and help us fulfill our mission of getting students graduated with degrees and getting them placed with jobs. And then one of the other more unusual statistics I noted is during the Final Four candidates, I was making notes of, I'm not going to mention names, of people who were checking their phones during the thing. Only one, only one person checked their phone. Everybody else was like fully attentive. That told me something, okay? That told me that this guy commanded attention, commanded the room, was able to communicate. And, you know, people, it's so hard to focus in today's times that people were focused on this guy. That is a real accomplishment. And so after I thought about all his unique characteristics, one of the things that really, really stood out for me is the fact that he's a student athlete and that he's involved with the NCAA. And I don't think any of the other candidates had that quality, and I believe his ability not only to communicate with the whole student population, but who can forget when UNF was going to the NCAA tournament and how revved up the college was? And such energy and excitement. And with that part of his background that he brings to the presidency, I just see great things for UNF. And not that any of the other candidates aren't qualified, they all had great things. Every time I'd meet a candidate, I'm like, wow, that's my guy or that's my gal. Then I'd meet the next person, I'd be like, wow. And when Mr. Samansky came in last, I was thoroughly convinced. I'm like, I just feel like, this is the guy, this is the guy that's going to inspire me, this is the guy that can inspire our faculty, this is the guy that can inspire the students, this is the guy that can inspire the Jacksonville community. And one last thing I wanted to mention, I wanted, when I was reading through the comments, I did notice a, some of the theme through the faculty that the College of Arts and Sciences seem to have concerns. So the last thing I did is I wanted to go through his personal comments. Because I, you know, I want to take your comments and your feedback into my deliberations and, you know, how I'm thinking. So I said, what did his fellow colleagues say that would kind of assuage those concerns? And so some of the things I outlined said he was a strong partner in diversity. Gained buy-in, even though originally, when he's talking about building a business school, there was resistance. So he went out and gained the buy-in. Not a micromanager. And one of the other things, never compromises his ethical principles, okay? And one of the things we've talked about, especially when it comes to the matrix and the funding, you can twist the numbers sometimes, and we've always felt, and that's one of the things we've always, always respected about President Delaney, is we never compromise our principles or our ethics. And then consults with faculty was in there. These are what his colleagues that he works with say about him. And so I felt like that can help assuage some of the concerns, and at the end of the day, hopefully will assuage their concerns. So, Mr. President, I would advocate, or Mr. Chairman, I would advocate for the nomination of Dr. Samansky to be our next president-elect of the University of North Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. And just by way of order, it is our job to recommend a president-elect for recommendation to the Board of Governors for confirmation. So we'll, with your, we've not been dealing in motions per se, but I'm going to put that forth.
I'll just use my city council.
Oh, I know, I know. But we're going to put that, accept that as a recommendation of Dr. Samansky. Trustee Tansler, do you have comments?
Yes, and ditto to every word that Steve said. I mean, Dr. Samansky is so personable. When you first meet him, you can't help but like him. I mean, he has charisma, he's got charm. He, and I went to college on a basketball scholarship, and he played the same position I did, which was being a backcourt forward. I mean, there's nothing about him I don't like, you know, and because he's extremely likable. And he also has the characteristics of charismatic leader and the ability to make tough decisions. But the president we need perhaps also needs to be able to implement changes, if needed, to improve UNF's metric performance. And that's a quality that I'm also looking for. And they both, or all candidates, need to be familiar with public-private partnerships and research dollars and internships. And so the two candidates that jumped out to me, one was extremely external, competent internally, and another was extremely good internally, competent externally. And so we got this tension between, do we go with external or we go with internal? And so to that end, I'm going to comment on John Soros. My frame of reference is primarily University of Florida IFAS. And University of Florida is a research, is a grant research college, just like Kansas State. But IFAS is about half of UF's budget and similarly at Kansas State. One thing about ag colleges is you have to be, you have to have a slice of many colleges within the university. I mean, you've got to have chemistry and engineering and biology and hydrology and business.
Chemistry.
And work with all of those deans in a collective way. And you've got to have a broad sense of intra-university affairs. And so to that end, I thought John Soros had that quality in addition to the humility, and was asked by the president and the provost to be head of a budget committee and other kind of intra-university committees that showed skillsets in looking at the university as a whole. Now, compared, our other most likable guy, favorite guy, had not been on any intra-university committees. And we look at the tail end of his resume, all committees were search committees, which leveraged his very strong external abilities. And the only committee that was internal was a college of deans, which are 18 seats, 38 deans transition through those seats, and never once was he chair. And I thought I picked up on perhaps tension among the deans. And I don't know why, unrelated to him surely, that the university also has had four presidents and five provosts, but that was going on parallel and not related to him. His ability to reach out to corporate America, represent his business college well, is unparalleled. He is the best, blue ribbon at that. And he brought in, you know, strong speakers, brought in strong curriculum, raised the national standard. And I believe if he was our president, he would raise our national standard, perhaps even, you know, the whole university. You know, but meanwhile, do our colleges need to have intra-university management skills and backbone and leadership qualities to help improve our metric scores and our academic performance and everything that needs to be done internally? Because lastly, Dr. Samansky said, this is his words, "I'm not an administrator, I delegate." And I believe that, at least because he likes the external. And so I believe our choice is internal versus external. And I don't know what the right answer is.
Well, and that will be the subject of our deliberations. No, I sincerely appreciate you raising those points, because we see some contrasting styles. And, you know, we think back that our job is to select the person who we believe, in our opinion, is the best for the university at this time. And so with that, trustee Tansler, would you like to recommend Dr. Flores for further consideration?
Yes, I mean, certainly to keep the conversation going and to have comparison.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
I just have.
Yeah, please use the microphones.
I just have a quick comment to my friend Stephen over there. Stephen, the agenda time for tonight was 6:00 to 8:00. Now I know why it was extended to 10 o'clock.
Other, any other comments from someone? Rhonda?
I also have a comment that is related to what trustee Joe said, and I appreciate your bringing forward the concerns of the faculty in the responses to David Samansky. I think David Samansky has a wide range of skills to do this job well externally and internally. I don't know if any of you were at the faculty forum on the day that he visited. Some of you were there. There were, and again, he has a wide range of skills. There were times that the tone of that forum was surprisingly tense and that responses to questions were more, a little more contentious than they had been with the other candidates. There were times when, because the candidate stood in the middle of the crowd, walked through the crowd in the middle, that it was, I was in the front, so I kind of couldn't see facial expression. And so I think some of those concerns come out of questions about the liberal arts and about other issues, at which the tone, again, was contentious. And so I think one of the things that we think about here is reading a room, remaining very level in a group of people that have pointed questions, because undoubtedly, a president will experience that in a lot of forums.
If I can ask a question, how was, did the faculty receive Dr. Samansky overall?
Well, if I take it from the forum and the written feedback and from feedback that I've received, I'd say the faculty received Dr. Samansky in a sort of a balanced way. I mean, there were definitely concerns after the forum, that I think some of which are reflected here, but again, a lot of the feedback that you summarized was positive through the online survey. It's just that what I've received has been mixed.
Trustee Hollingsworth?
I'll cut to the chase first, and then I'll be long-winded. I'll cut to the chase first, and then I'll be long-winded. I support David Samansky as our next president, and I'll tell you why in a minute. Kevin, you started your remarks by talking about John Delaney and what he's done. And I think it's important to set the predicate of what John Delaney's done to understand where we're headed. And I, if you remember, our trustees meeting the first time John had announced his retirement, I said that Jacksonville's a different place because of John Delaney. UNF's a different place because of John Delaney. And as citizens, we've got to be grateful for what John has done. And I asked Sharon Ashton to give me a few of John's accomplishments since president. I had to actually stop printing, the, the document was so long. But here are eight that jumped out at me. In John's tenure since 2004, enrollment has jumped by 17 and a half percent. GPA has gone from 3.6 to 4.27, that's the average entering GPA. He's doubled the percentage of minority students on campus. UNF is now the best in the state among all 12 universities in placing graduates into jobs in Florida. So taxpayers are getting their money's worth when it comes to educating Florida employees. Under John's leadership, we have 2 million new square feet of labs, classroom and other academic space. 2 million square feet, phenomenal. Our endowment is two and a half times larger than it was when John started. He's raised $250 million, and we've moved from one national ranking when John began his tenure to 11 today. Now, why is all that important? Well, you'll remember, Dr. Samansky talked about, why do we press ahead? Why do we work hard to accomplish things? Because, not because we want to move from A to B, but we want to move from B to C. And sometimes that move to B, from B to C, is not even recognizable until we get that momentum going. All of you are familiar with Jim Collins, the author of Good to Great. He talks about the fly wheel, fly wheel concept. And here's what Collins says, I love this. He said, "In building a great organization, there is no single defining action, no grand program, no one killer innovation, no solitary lucky break, no miracle moment. Rather, the process of improvement resembles relentlessly pushing a giant heavy fly wheel, turn upon turn, building momentum to a point of breakthrough and beyond." And I think it's John who got this fly wheel started at UNF. And I think it's Dr. Samansky who's best positioned to keep that fly wheel spinning and that momentum turning. So why him? Well, Dr. Egan did a terrific job, as did Stephen, in talking about all of the accomplishments. A few quick anecdotes. We asked every candidate about metrics. Dr. Samansky was the only one that I'm aware of in the pool that actually provided 35 pages of metrics. Every page is full of how Dr. Samansky was going to guide his progress at the University of Cincinnati, and it's impressive. I found him to be genuine. Genuineness showed up in a few really interesting ways. Bella, I assume Bella's still here. Bella, you'll remember in the question and answer session of the semifinalists, I found some of the question and answer a little awkward, as if the questions were sort of because they were supposed to. If you remember Dr. Samansky, his first question to the search committee was to you. And it wasn't a question to a student, it was a question to Bella, in a genuine way, wanting to know about her, her academic experience and where she was headed. And I found that level of genuineness really awesome. I remember Thomas, while we were gathering last week for our inter, formal interview to begin, he came over and talked to you, which tells me he cared about your success. In the commentary we received, here's what one of the staff members said. Said, "I observed Dr. Samansky doing something that exemplifies the type of leader we want, as well as the type of person he portrayed himself to be. As he walked into the Office of Academic Affairs, he was in conversation with an administrator that was escorting him to the provost. He stopped his conversation in progress to turn and politely introduce himself to the secretary sitting in the reception area. He was unaware that anyone was watching, as I was around the corner when this occurred. This was a totally spontaneous gesture acknowledging the work that everyone, regardless of rank, puts into their job on campus. I am impressed by his character, because as we all know, that is what you, your character is what you do when you think no one's looking." And so then I think about a story he told at dinner Friday night, the dinner that I chaired, two of our foundation board members are here that were at dinner. He told a story of two business students from the University of Cincinnati who were in Belgium the night of a terrorist attack. They actually happened to be in a town where they were not living, they were there for a day. And he busted through the academic and, and financial bureaucracy of the University of Cincinnati to get these kids the help they needed. He talked about calling up the Costco chairman cold, just to try and get him on campus at Texas A&amp;M, which means he's willing to do that. He served, not on the, he serves in the Office Depot board now, but what we have to remember is he served in the Office Max board prior to Office Depot. Why is that important? It's important because Office Max and Office Depot merged. Office Max's headquarters were in Chicago, Office Depot's were in Boca Raton. Ultimately, the decision was made to move the combined headquarters to Florida. So as a member of the board, he understands what it takes for a, for a locale to be competitive economically. And I think that's going to serve Jacksonville well. Finally, let me speak to the concerns from the co-AS faculty. I'm not a member of the co-AS faculty, and I can't pretend to understand the dynamics that various faculty members might be going through as they analyze candidates. As I, as I mentioned earlier, I talked to 12 faculty members over the weekend, the vast majority of whom were co-AS. And they expressed deep reservations and concerns about Dr. Samansky, the kinds of concerns that Rava shared a moment ago. My sense, though, is those concerns are born of a few things. One, a concern that a business dean is going to undervalue the liberal arts element of the education, and that's understandable. But UNF is not a liberal arts institution. We have liberal arts programs, but we are not a liberal arts institution and we're a state university. I think there's a distinction, number one. Number two, I believe absolutely, as sure as I'm sitting here, that Dr. Samansky will more than halfway meet the co-AS faculty in an effort to reconcile their concerns. That's why I mentioned the Bella anecdote. That's why I mentioned the Thomas anecdote. That's why I read the staff members' quote about engaging the secretary, the kids in, in Belgium. Because that's the, that's the measure of a genuine person who's not going to, I'm sure he's watching this by live stream right now, and I promise you, it hurts his heart to think that there are faculty members who are bothered by his appearance, his presence, his answers, and he's going to fix that. And so that doesn't, now, we're going to hold him accountable for fixing it. This board is high on accountability. And so if that's, or at least we're going to be high on accountability. And, and if that's a weakness and that's a concern of faculty, then I think this board will make it its mission to make sure that concern is cured. And so for those co-AS faculty who are either here or watching, I heard you. I heard you personally. I did talk to your dean, who affirmed that he believed in the dean's letter that still says that Dr. Samansky is the best of the four options. So I'm committed to Dr. Samansky as the next leader for all the reasons I've said, and even more committed to make sure that we bridge whatever gaps might exist.
Thank you. We're, we're going to observe a rule of parliamentary procedure, which is that everyone has a chance to speak before others speak again. So we've had Stephen Hans and Adam speak. Does anyone else like to speak? Thomas, we'll just go around. Anything you'd like to add? Use the microphone. And if you don't wish to speak, just merely, merely say that.
Well, I would say that after the interviews, the two that I was thinking mostly about, and this has to do mostly with how they interacted with students first, but also how poised they were, I think honestly, were Dr. Samansky and Dr. Carmen. Those are the two that I've been thinking about this whole weekend. And for me, I'm still a bit undecided, because for one, I think both of them have a lot of different attributes that we are looking for. And ideally, I wish I could combine both of them, because I think that person would be our next president. But I would like to hear more discussion from the board before I have my decision made.
Right. Thank you, Thomas. Willie, anything?
Well, I'm high on Dr. Samansky, not only for the things that have been said to date, but also my interaction with him. As you know, I discussed with all of them the issue of small businesses and the, the issue of collaboration with the community. I got some very good feedback from him. I think that, I too focused in on the, on the sports analogies that he used. He and I were talking about when he was in high school, in a Catholic high school, and, and how he played. And I expressed to him that I started out basketball in high school as, and the people look at my size, I said, "No, I was the manager," which is a nice way of saying that I was the ball boy. But he, he took an interest in that. And, and also, I had a chance to speak to the others. I think, I think we, we ended up with four good candidates. But I think at the end of the day, I would be very happy with Samansky. I'm the only one on this board that has gone through this process in the past. As you know, I was on the selection committee for John Delaney, and I can tell you, many of the comments as to why the school didn't want John, okay, were voiced then. You know, no PhD, no this, no that. My comment has always been from an economic perspective in terms of small businesses, and that is that John was running a, a city, and this campus is a small town. And so you need to handle not only faculty, okay, not only staff, but you have to handle police, buildings, roads, you know, you name it, and it's, it's the equivalent of, of running a small city. I think that Samansky has all of the attributes that can help us with all of that.
Thank you. Trustee McElroy?
Thank you, Chair. I echo many of the same thoughts around the table, and I won't be redundant. I think that Hans probably hit it closest to what I was thinking between Dr. Samansky and Dr. Carmen. So I switched, I think, a player there on you. But I think Samansky certainly has a sales and marketing bias, certainly external facing. I was a little concerned about the, about the internal aspects of the, of the management of the utility and the things that, that Willie just mentioned in terms of the things that will come up day in and day out, hour in and hour out, in this small village or city that we call UNF. I, I was struck by Carmen as, and I, I wrote in terms of a comprehensive candidate, a strong experience in leadership of a regional university and similar size and scope and demographics to UNF. I was really impressed with his body of work from an academic standpoint, in terms of he continues to publish, he continues to be an academic. Now granted, he still is provost, but he's executive vice president and works as leading the organization, and sort of the second and fills in for the president. I was extremely touched by him as a candidate in that he was the one that touched my heart when talking about student success. Not only terms of programs, but his commitment. I felt his heart. He shared, he felt his pocketbook personally to engage students and to lead their, and encourage their success and get them off, started on the right foot going forward. He talked a lot about the, the difference in the community, and I think we have a lot of that at UNF in terms of, yes, we have a cohort of students with exceptional educational competence and capabilities, but we also have a number of students that transfer in from the, from the community college. And so we have these two cohorts. And he, I think, addressed that in terms of understanding an urban university and an urban campus, as well as with the, the diversity and the improvement in the metrics. I say that I won't bore everyone, because we heard the same metrics. I mean, in terms of graduation rates, they've doubled. In terms of diversity, they've doubled. In terms of the, the programs talked in such level of specificity, not in just a line of business or a, a school, but in terms broadly across the university and, and managing that. A budget of a couple, over in excess of a couple of hundred million dollars understands that, you know, you've got to, you've got to accept the reality of the landscape in which you deal in, and you've got to improve it and drive forward. So I think to Hans' point again, with exceptional internal with the ability and capabilities for external versus exceptional external in sales and marketing and promotion and outreach to, you know, something, something that is not as strong internally.
Thank you. Trustee Wombleking?
So I will not repeat everything that everyone said. I get to be last, so it's sort of like at the end of the church service. I support David Samansky for all the reasons that have already been.
Sure, give me one a little bit closer.
Okay. Dr. Samansky, for all the reasons that we've already heard. Some of the things that, that haven't been said yet. I was impressed by the fact, when we talked to him about shared governance, he talked about co-creation, and that nothing happens on his campus without co-creation and co-innovation. And he talked a lot about that as a way of being. He put together a program, PACE program, that all of us really liked a lot, where it was a way of changing the culture. Pace meaning professional, academic, character and experiential. And as he put it together, it was just, this is the way we should think. But then he was able to do what we've all been talking about, and that's align the entire institution to thinking that way about pace. He was able to increase diversity. And I, I went to dinner with him, and we talked a lot about that, in a city where he said diversity is very, very difficult. He took that on. And he said, "I took it on not because it was just in my face, it's the right thing to do, and I had to be intentional about it." And he has increased diversity some 60% because of that. Hired a head of diversity and inclusion and said, "I don't want you to sit at the desk, I want you to do something. And I want you to do it both with students, staff and faculty." And so it was comprehensive. The other thing that really, since everyone's being touched in their heart, one of the things they talked about was challenges. And he said, "One of the challenges we face is student well-being." I don't think we heard that from anyone else. We heard about student success. But he talked about student well-being and understanding the pressures and the constraints that students are facing, and how should we as an institution help our students and increase their well-being? He talked about affordability, and therefore it was critical that he would be a strong fundraiser and has been. And then accessibility, and that's why he started the Business Fellows Program. And this is a program where they bring students in from middle school and high school and just bring them to the college, so they can see college. They, they may not end up at the University of Cincinnati. And that's very visionary. I mean, it's spending their money to change the way the community sees college. So I thought he, he had a lot of really great ideas for what he considers UNF to be the opportunity. And he kept saying, "I'm in the opportunity business," and he wants to build on what President Delaney has done. And he said, I remember, "I think what makes UNF, uniquely UNF now, is high touch, and I think that I can come and bring high immersion to the high touch."
I'm going to reserve the chair's prerogative to speak last. So Rhonda?
I did speak once before, but I'm going to make a very brief comment.
You're recognized.
Thanks. That, that Dr. Carmen did have very strong support from a variety of constituencies, that one of the points that wasn't made before, I think, was that while he sort of had a calm, low-key demeanor, he still had experience with fundraising and with a variety of external contacts, including with legislators, and that he had a track record of having built research capacity, which is one of the things that the, like the six areas that the Board of Trustees defined as important strategic priorities going forward. And so with a track record like that, where his approach was not, at least my read was, his approach wasn't that, "I'm here to turn you into LSU or UNR." His approach was, "I think we'd have to have conversations about what kind of research or university you want to become," and he had the background to make that possible.
Trustee Egan?
I want to thank trustee Tansler, just sounds great, for again, identifying that tension. And what, what I came away with was, of the candidates who have sat in a provost seat, who have sat in a different, their, their current environment is such that it is more internal versus the job description of those that seem to be more external. So is their capacity more a reflection of where they sit now, as opposed to where the opportunities at UNF lie? And I don't have a big, I don't have a basis for that. I think from what I've learned of these candidates and what I've heard tonight and through this process is, I think I'm mostly, I, I support the candidacy of Dr. Samansky with caveat, that if he is chosen, we would charge him to look specifically at those things which give us angst. Number one being the faculty perception of research, the faculty perception of. one being the faculty perception of research, the faculty perception of liberal arts courses, and obviously that energy needs to be spent looking internal as well as external. So...
Trustee Brian?
I too want to thank you, Hans. That was a very good explanation for, for the struggle I had. And while I spent the most time with Dr. Flores, and I have great respect for him and really enjoyed our time, I too support Dr. Samansky in this process. I just think that the way he operated, as I watched him around this campus that day, it just, it set him apart from everyone else. And I watched the nuances of his reactions and interactions with people, and it just, it really impressed me. So...
Yeah. Willie?
Yeah, I did overlook one thing, and I want to make sure that I, I said it. At the U.S. Small Business Administration, one of the things that we do is we encourage organizations, especially minority small business organizations that don't get their fair share of the pie, that they have to make a concerted effort to, as we call it, you have to show the flag. So you have to attend meetings, you have to show up at conferences, you have to let people know that you exist. So we do that with, whether it's the Asian-American Chamber of Commerce, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic-American Chamber of Commerce. The discussion that I had with Dr. Samansky was that he was well aware of some of that that was happening in Cincinnati, although he thought that more could be done. But the other element that he brought in is the power of athletics. Athletics is a way of showing the flag. People will know UNF, not only in terms of its academic standards, but also by the, I think we have, what, 21, maybe 21 teams? And every time they go out there and they play, they're showing the flag for UNF. On top of that, we happen to have a department whose grade average is higher than the rest of the student body. So it demonstrates that we're doing the right thing. But I really think that getting the word out, we took, during my time, we took sports from Division II to Division I, and that's a big thing. And people have, we talked about parents and what they look at in terms of a, of a school, not only the academic side, but, you know, is my son or daughter going to have fun? Okay? Are they going to participate in activities that will develop them? And going back to the comment that he made, because that stood with me also, his comment about tennis being a strategic sport and basketball being a team sport. And I think that's what we build, you know, we build on this campus, a better student understanding of what it is to be a member of a team.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me, for all the trustees, thank you for the very, very thoughtful comments. Some of us have served on bodies that aren't quite so collegial. And I sincerely appreciate the fact that we, that we can have this discussion about, I think all of us, when we were appointed, whether by the Board of Governors or the governor himself, were told that the most important decision we will make during our time is the decision we're about to make. And from the comments that are being said, I know each of us are taking that responsibility seriously and thoughtfully, and that if asked by either the governor or the Board of Governors, we can say that we faithfully discharged our duty. With that being said, I'm going to exercise the chair's prerogative to recommend that Dr. David Samansky be the president-elect and that he be the candidate recommended to the Board of Governors for confirmation. And as you all gave your reasons, I think it's only fair that I give mine. I, by the very nice privilege that Joy Corman gave me of chairing this committee, had the opportunity to spend time apart from the formal interview process with nearly all of these candidates, whether in person or by phone. And of the four candidates, I have spent that time with them well before the process began, and they were on campus. And the first observation is, we are so lucky to have four, we had more than four, but to have four outstanding candidates for final consideration. The test that I have used is similar to what many of you have used, is where do I see our president in Jacksonville? And I'm not confining it to this campus, because I believe that UNF is a, if not the most important, certainly one of the most important institutions in this region, and that we can do more. Not to take away from anything that's been done, but as many have said, we have this great platform built, built for moving forward. And I think about who can walk in each section of the community, whether it be in the business community, the charitable community, the civic community, the professional community, north side, east side, west side, south side. I see Dr. Samansky doing that. He won't be perfect. One of the downsides that we have of four outstanding candidates is that none of them have a 32205 or similar zip code right now. But I see in him a person who has succeeded in areas that he has worked in at very, very high levels, and that he will be comfortable working in that area. I had some time to spend with Maria, his wife, an outstanding lovely person who I think, I was told by Dr. Samansky the first time that I met him, that his wife wants to get involved, as she has done in Cincinnati, and not to the exclusion of what other, others may do with their spouses, affirmatively said how much she enjoys doing that, and particularly mentioned student interaction that she likes to have. And many have talked about the importance of that student interaction. So I would be proud to have Dr. Samansky as our next president. I feel very comfortable about the reference checks that have been done. I feel comfortable with him personally, to give you an example. I woke up last night thinking, one of the, to me, outstanding attributes that Dr. Samansky have is that he has been chosen to serve on three boards of directors of Fortune 500 or greater companies. I know, as being a corporate lawyer, that doesn't happen easily. Then I had the cold sweat of thinking, does UNF have a contract with Office Depot? And does that create a conflict of interest? And we do have a contract with Office Depot. So Karen Stone and I worked today with the Florida Commission on Ethics to make sure that we have no legal problems at all, and we don't. I then spoke to Dr. Samansky and said, "Here is an issue, that we have cleared it, but are you comfortable with this?" And the statement he made to me was very, very endearing, which was, "I will do for UNF what is right." Now, I'm not saying he has to resign from that Board or anything like that, but I like the fact that the first thing he said was anticipating his loyalty was going to lie to UNF as opposed to his current position. That said a lot to me today, and only confirmed in my mind the recommendation I'm making. So with that, we will open it up for further discussion and see if we can gain consensus around this. Stephen?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I'm counting the votes, it seems like Dr. Samansky is, is the candidate, and so I would ask by acclamation it be unanimous.
All right. Trustee Tansler?
Yes, I can help that. And I raise John Flores as a talking point, really, to kind of explore this tension. And I echo that, and I would second his nomination, because I also support Samansky, and it's for two reasons. I mean, one, I respect my colleagues. And what has been discussed here made it clear that his qualities is what we're looking for. And the second reason is, I want to support unanimously our president. And to that end, I'm happy to second that.
All in favor of Dr. David Samansky being the next president of UNF indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next president is Dr. David Samansky. The second motion I would ask trustees is that you authorize me to negotiate a contract of employment, subject to confirmation by the Board of Governors.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Any further business to come before the Board tonight?
Wow, is this the end?
Hard to believe, we're close.
Mr. Chairman, I know I speak for my Board colleagues in acknowledging and thanking you for your tremendous service. We know the number of meetings that you've had to attend, only what we've seen on the public calendar, never mind the many, many, many meetings you've had to have with staff and search firms and the individual candidates you've described. And so I think for me and for the Board, we owe you a debt of gratitude and are grateful for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Just by way of logistics, our next meeting Board is on March 1st, when we have a joint meeting with the FSCJ Board. I would also note that we are going to carve out some time, probably before, but maybe after, for your final ratification of the contract terms, because we have to present those on March 6th to the Board of Governors. And then we meet on March 15th in our next regularly scheduled meeting. Nothing further, we are adjourned.
Wow.
Good stuff.
I do.
No comments?